Call the regular session of the council meeting to order, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation by Reverend Chip Aker. Welcome Chip.
Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with a desire to do what is best for this town and for the people who make it their home. We recognize that the solutions that we choose to improve our lives can't please everyone because we're all human. We're highly complex beings with diversity that makes us different in our tastes, opinions, and approaches to our common problems. Conducting that balancing act is a heavy burden, Father. As such, in order to lead and to do what's best, our leaders need wisdom and grace to balance the factors and make their choices. We all need it. For those things, we come to you and ask that as you give us that grace and wisdom, that you would also bring us together, making this a place where your favor rests and blesses all who live here and visit here. Help us to honor you in the manner in which we conduct ourselves in doing this important business for this great town of Fountain Hills. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Chip. Chip's with Four Peaks Community Church down on Fountain Hills Boulevard. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino. Councilmember Legay. Councilmember Dickey. Councilmember Elkie. Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Brown.
Here. Excellent. First item on, before we get into the agenda now is, get to read a proclamation here. Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation in European jewelry and by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. And whereas during the Holocaust, six million people were murdered and millions more suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individual societies and governments. And whereas always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society. And whereas pursuant to the Act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council has designated days of remembrance to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. Now therefore, I J.D. Schlum, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills hereby proclaim the week of May 1 through 8, 2011, as days of remembrance in the Town of Fountain Hills in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators and further proclaim that we as citizens of Fountain Hills should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Next items, presentation by Chair of our McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, Mr. Bill Myers relating to search and rescue signage for the public safety in the town's preserve. Welcome Bill.
Thank you very much. Appreciate being here. I do have a few talking points. Thank you very much, Mr. Schlum, Mayor, and the council and all. I'm here to talk about the signage package, which is an emergency signage package and information and helicopter landing zones in our preserve in Fountain Hills. After I give a few remarks here, I'm going to ask Steve Fleming, who's here, who's also the Chair of the McDowell Mountain Conservancy, to give a little information about the blood, sweat, and tears it took to get this project done. In case you, some of you are new to me, I am the Chair of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission here in town. If you would indulge me, I'm going to go through a few little slides here and then perhaps we can answer questions at the end. And I have an official copy, it says so right here, of the plan for all of the markers and I'll present that to the town perhaps at the end. First slide, actually this is page one of five pages, which is the plan for the markings, emergency markings and landing zones and information signs in the preserve. On the left-hand side is just a detail of the preserve. In the middle is a little bit of a detail of our town map and I'll talk about these two in just a moment. Right-hand side is all the dignitaries that are here today. This is our town map. On this side, Scottsdale, the mountain park is to our north. And the green here shows the Fountain Hills Preserve. It's a big chunk of ground, just less than 1,000 acres. It's actually 940 acres, 740 acres is owned by 22,000, 23,000 people here in town. It is a big chunk of ground and to give a sense of proportion, I compare it to Fountain Park. Fountain Park's a great asset the town owns and it's about 64 acres. So if you imagine 15 parks together contiguous, that's the size of that preserve. It's a big chunk of ground. Whoops, that's the wrong one. This is the detail of the preserve. It's kind of outlined and I think that's yellow, might be green, I'm not sure. And we have six miles of trails up there and we also have six trails. Each one is not a mile, but they're in total six and six. Really an awful lot of thank you has to be given to the conservation folks for really doing most of the shovel work to put those trails in. Also here is the only legal access to the Fountain Hills Preserve. It's the Sonoran Trail. And as you might recall, about a year and a half ago, we had a ribbon connecting, connecting our town to the preserve through somebody else's property, the mountain park. The regional park, rather. So we're thrilled to death to have that sunrise or sunset access to the park, to the preserve, rather. It is not a park. And the usage has picked up significantly. We don't have any counters yet. That might be something we'll be getting before too long, I hope. But the, just being up there, you can tell the usage is significantly greater than it was before we had that connection in there. We're thrilled to death to have it. One other little comment is from where you park your car at the trailhead, up to the north door of the preserve is about two miles. So for hikers to hike up there and get their one foot in the preserve and go back, it's a four-mile round trip. If you walk into the preserve a mile, it's a six-mile round trip. Only one way in, one way out. One of the four work groups that the commission is working on is to seeing if there's any other way we can let the owners of that property get up there without having to walk four, five, or six miles. Uh-oh. Now this is big picture map. Get oriented, this is our town. Preserve is right in there. Up there is the regional park, 21,000 acres. This is Scottsdale with, part of Scottsdale and it shows about 60 miles of trails. These guys have 50 miles of trails. We have six. As you can see, we're a little bit of a link between these two large chunks of hiking trails. We use this map a lot at the fairs. As you know, we have a booth at the fair, Scottsdale Preserve has a booth, and the regional park has a booth. We're all, it's hiking central, I suppose. And this map answers a lot of questions for the people here in town and others who come up there. How do you get the regional park, this question and that question? Or a frequently asked question is, how do you get to Fountain Hills Preserve? Where is it? I've lived here eight years and I've never, how do you do that? One of the other things we're working on is trying to get some of the people, some of the owners of that park to know where it is, how to get there, and some of the benefits. It has a huge amount of benefits. This is a page two of five. You really have to look at this for two or three minutes to figure out what it's trying to tell you. I'm going to do just a little bit on this and then I'm going to skip over three, four, and five because there are just more details of this same master plan. But this is an indication of where the emergency markers and landing zones are. And for example, you probably can't read this, but up here somewhere it'll probably say PT 12. And that's, that spot right there. PT stands for Promenade Trail in this instance. So if you get in trouble, you use 911 and in most places in the park, you can get, you can dial 911 and get out and tell somebody you're at PT 14, if that's where you are. And you got a much better chance at getting rescued before something dastardly happens. We've talked to a number of folks in the fire department and they're just thrilled to death with this thing. They think this will save lives, maybe this year, if not this year, in the future. They're in the process of making 15 copies of this five-page package to give to other 911 responders, Rio Verde, Scottsdale, his department, others, so that when somebody calls in for an emergency, there'll be people there to know what's going on and be able to help. So I'm going to skip over these next deals, next several pages. Again, they mean a lot to the emergency responders, but I just wanted to show a couple of examples. This is an example of the emergency rescue helicopter zone. We have seven helicopter zones up there where actual helicopters can land. We started by having some of the folks go up there ourselves and say, gee, I think they could land here, here, and here. And then through coordination with the sheriff's department, we had the helicopter up there and they said, yes, this one works, that one works, that one doesn't. So in that coordination, we came up with seven pads. And again, this is just for the health and safety of all the guys that walk up there. I was worried that when I saw the plan on this thing, that we might have sign pollution, but we really don't. There's 180 signs up there on about 100 posts or something like that. This one actually has to have, happens to have five signs, maybe one or two on the back. I can't quite tell. But this is an example, this one tells you it's a Sonoran Trail. Tells you the distance, elevation change, and the degree of difficulty. And there's other information on that sign. When hikers are up there, if you don't want to hike an impossible trail or one that's going to really strain, you don't have to take it. This, again, is going to give more information to the people who hike that trail to keep them in, keep them in good shape. This is a post that has three signs on it. Promenade Trail, PT 14. On the backside is another sign that says also PT 14. There isn't sign pollution because most of the signs are the emergency markers. It says emergency marker right there. You can tell the size of this sign by the size of the water bottle next to it. That's probably about a foot and a half high. And that's what most of the signs are. So this was really designed for the safety and health and welfare, if you will, of the people who are going to walk up there, who do walk up there now. I have a pretty short presentation. I wanted to say a couple of the things about the preserve. In addition to being about 15 times the size of Fountain Park, it's probably the most expensive asset the town will ever buy. By the time we get done with principal and interest, we'll have about $18 million in this one asset. Constant dollars, it'll probably be the biggest asset the town will ever buy. So it's the largest in dollars, largest in acres, and we're starting to get more usage of the preserve and it's a great town asset. I call it a hidden asset. It's hidden in plain sight. But if you ask 20 out of the 22,000 people here where it is, they'd kind of give you an arm wave and it's maybe up there somewhere and very few would have an idea on how to get there. We're working on that problem. Really, I wanted to get Steve Fleming up here to talk about some of the blood, sweat, and tears in putting all these signs in because there's an awful lot of people that were involved in this whole process. And I wanted to talk about a few people, four of them, and I hate to mention anybody's name because it leaves out the other 300 or however many we had, but I'm going to do it anyway. And the first name I want to give thanks to is a guy that really is the heart and soul of the preserve. And he's not going to like me even saying this, but he's been here even before the preserve existed and as recently as this morning, he was up flagging trails with a number of us for the potential connection trail. That man, of course, is Mr. Roy Kinsey. He is the heart and soul of the, yes, deserves a lot. Another individual is Ken Valverde of the city. He was very instrumental in helping produce this document and he deserves an awful lot of credit for the good things that he has done. Also want to thank you for Captain Golden. He was, been up there helping us suggesting this and suggesting that. He deserves the credit too. But the most amount of credit really goes to a guy named Bob Sanders. Bob's on our commission. He is the guy that we nominated about two years ago in the commission to present or to create a signage package for the preserve. And he has spent countless hours up there walking the preserve, figuring out where the signs ought to be, figuring out what they should say. And he was the general for having all of the volunteers go up there and put, dig holes in and put the signs in. So those are the four individuals I specifically really wanted to recognize. Well, with that, I'd ask Steve to come up and talk about blood, sweat, and tears about putting all these signs in.
Thank you, Bill.
And after that, we can perhaps give this to you, Mayor.
Good.
Thank you.
Hi Steve.
Good evening. I'm Steve Fleming, your chairman of the Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills. Mayor, council, staff. Just very quickly, like Bill, recognizing Ken Valverde, the master of signs and things of that sort. He's in maps, he's a great guy, and Bob Sanders. But the doing of it is the important part, the talking about it, but actually the doing and putting these signs in are the things, or is the thing that's going to be saving lives. So very, very quickly, the conservancy did put them in. We made 110 holes in rocks on our backs, 2,933 pounds of concrete, 40 gallons of water, almost 300 hours of labor, which wasn't billed to anybody. Given the tight economic times, it was kind of our joy to do this. The old, that adage, whatever that Kevin Costner movie was, Costner movie was, build it and they will come. Well, that's what's happening with the preserve. Once we opened up the Sonoran Trail, they started coming in masses. And as most of you know, we are working very hard and we're working on today to create the linked trail from our western loop over to the Scottsdale Sunrise, which will give a southern exit. And I guarantee you, the masses will be coming through. There's a lot of excitement. So I think we as, certainly we as a conservancy view as leaders of our town, we all have a responsibility to the people who use those trails. And in the event there is an emergency, it will happen. It's not a question of if, it will. So that's the whole impetus, the motive behind doing this sort of thing. And the conservancy is very happy to do it on behalf of the town. With that, that's really all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks to Mark Mayer for the support, the finance, the financial support you gave us so we could actually create the signs and put them in for you. So they're done, they're finished, they're ready to go and hopefully it never happens. But if it does, the chance of saving somebody is a lot better.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Bill. The preserve is beautiful and now it's that much more usable and navigable, I guess. If that's the right word. But again, for those that haven't been out there, take Golden Eagle Boulevard, pass Golden Eagle Park all the way to the end into Eagles Nest. It's a great trailhead there. And then you wind into and follow the symbols in the sidewalk through the Eagles Nest subdivision to the access to the McDowell Mountain Regional Park. And then you'll follow the trail signs into the actual preserve, which is, it is a little bit of a hike just to get into our preserve. So getting all those signs, you had to hike quite a ways just to dig the holes, mix the mud, place the signage and a great deal of work and effort. And it's very much appreciated and we're thankful for the passion that you folks have for our community and for our preserve. And you've added a great deal and this is really capping it off. And then adding the additional access would be that much more of a ability to get more folks up there. But it's beautiful and I just encourage everyone to get up there again and be happy to receive that, Bill. Your new map designating the locations and the helipad locations. I know you took a lot of time and I think the MCSO helicopter, I think helped at one point to help to make sure we had some good landing zones. So good work utilizing a lot of resources and doing it in a very efficient way given the financial restraints we have on us right now. Any questions for comments from council, for Bill or Steve? Excellent, Bill, anything else?
Well, we'd like to present you with this official copy if you'd come down.
Oh my.
Steve and I can both present it. Steve, come on up. Actually, you can tell us the official copy because it says so right here.
So we have an official copy. Oh, look at that, how well it's printed on there in blue pen. Must be official. Thank you.
This is the official copy and I think it'll save somebody's life maybe.
Absolutely. And the signage makes it that much more enjoyable up there. Well, we have, I, the Easter bunny came by and here, Bill, you can share with Steve if you want, but here's the Easter treat for you. For all your work, I'm sure, you know, that's what you were looking forward to. Thank you very much, guys, thank you. Mark this in the record as official copy.
Thank you again. Before we go into the next item, I want to just mention, in case folks are here originally, up until Monday, we had an update from Allied Waste on the agenda. That is not on this agenda, that'll likely be on our next agenda. So if you did want to comment, I think we'll have called to the public. If you wanted to share any comments, since that's not an agendized item tonight, you'd want to do that. Share your comments during the call to the public. But again, look for that to be on likely the next agenda. So now we will go to call to the public. Bob, have anyone on this?
Yes, sir, Bo James.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Mr. James.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Cantino, council and staff. As you, as we all know, the Constitution is the basic governing document from which all other governing documents, legitimate laws, regulations, and rules flow. The Constitution is a definitive American statement of the conditions of legitimate political authority, the ends of government, and the sovereignty of people. Your oath of office contains these are very similar words. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. From time to time, it is good for all of us to get a refresher course in much of what we have previously learned. This Saturday, April 23rd, in the community center, the Fountain Hills Republican Club is sponsoring a nonpartisan course on the Constitution by renowned constitutional scholar and lecturer Shane Krausler. I'll be getting refreshed on the Constitution Saturday. As president of the Republican Club, I invite all of you on the dais, mayor, vice mayor, council members, town manager, town attorney, town clerk, to attend at no charge as guests of myself and the Republican Club. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and hope to see you Saturday morning.
Thank you, Bill.
One question.
Mr. Elkie.
What time is it?
The time, 9 o'clock.
All right, thank you. Is there one more call to the public?
No, sir, just one.
I thought there was one more, thank you. Onto the consent agenda. Let's see here. First item, consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from April 7, 2011. And item number two is consideration of resolution 2011-14, granting an underground power easement to SRP Agricultural Improvement Power District located just north of the alley at the north edge of Platte 205, north of Colony Drive. Could I get a motion?
Still move.
And we got a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember Legay.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino. Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Elkie.
Aye.
Mayor Schlum.
Aye.
Mayor 70.
Thank you. Onto the regular agenda. We'll have one report from Mr. Rogers on these two items. Item number three is consideration of a permanent liquor license extension of premises patio permit application submitted by Carolyn Redendo Sofrita LLC for the purpose of creating outdoor seating and dining areas located in the front of the restaurant on the public sidewalk at 16848 East Avenue of the Fountains. And we'll also then hear of an encroachment permit application submitted by Redendo's for Sofrita in the same area as permitting an outdoor seating and dining area in the front of the restaurant as well at the same location. And we'll take motions separately, but here a report on both right now. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This application, Sofrita's Restaurant is located on the Avenue of the Fountains for both the encroachment permit and extension of premise for their liquor license. The reason for these requests coming before council is that the restaurant wishes to utilize a portion of the public sidewalk for outdoor seating, dining, and entertainment purposes. This is the general floor plan of the restaurant. It also shows a proposed outdoor seating area. The outdoor area is located on the public sidewalk and such an encroachment requires town approval. As can be seen, the area will be enclosed within a three-foot tall wrought iron fence. This is a separation requirement of both our town codes and the state liquor license. Here are some photographs of the proposed fence area. The front door is located here at these steps. The existing patio is here and here in this photo. The fence comes out from the wall, goes down the sidewalk, and then wraps around the building into the courtyard area. And the side door to the restaurant is located about there. ADA access around the area will be maintained. And ADA access inside the area will also be maintained. This is an aerial that shows the dining area in the dotted yellow. The fence is the gold-colored line around it. The yellow and red circle shows the approximate location of the flamenco dancers when they perform under the crosswalk shade structure. And this is also on the public sidewalk. The Building Safety Division identified issues regarding the building code, ADA access, and restrooms. The Engineering Division has noted issues related to ADA access, indemnification insurance, potential pedestrian vehicle conflicts, and after-hours cleanup. Both planning and economic development staff believe the activities such as these being proposed will help generate activity and interest in the downtown area if they're properly conducted. And staff recommends approval of the encroachment permit and the extension of premise subject to annual review and reapproval by council and satisfactory compliance with the local, state, and federal code requirements noted by building and engineering memos and outlined in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. The applicants are also present.
Good. And they have to, we need to make this choppy so they can get back to flamenco dancers, which they happen to have scheduled on our council meeting nights. But anyway, thank you, Bob, very good. We'll take the item number three, which is first, the permanent liquor license extension of premises patio permit application. Can I get a motion on that item?
Still move.
And do we have a second on that item?
If the motion is on the extension of premises or on the.
The first item is extension of premise. And we have them first. Yes, no, no. It's the second one in the staff report. So let's make it, make sure it's clear. Councilmember Legay, you stated the motion, right? It's on the item to approve the extension of premise license for Sofrita Restaurant, 16848 East Avenue of the Fountains, as presented, subject to applicant addressing requirements and conditions outlined in the Building Safety Division and Engineering Division review reports to the town's satisfaction as well as satisfying the Department of Justice ADA access requirements. And then the next item, we'll talk about the encroachment permit. So is that your motion on that item? All right.
Second.
You have a second, all right. Council questions? Councilmember Elkie?
Bob, if I could. I understand that in the application that was submitted, on the second page, it does say. does say, "subject to annual review," which is what you just said on the first page. I notice that was crossed off, a six-month review, and it was handwritten in there, "permanent." I just want to be clear first that this is something subject to review, and what is that review?
Well, that was for the encroachment permit. That was a standard form, six-month review is standard for encroachment permits on a long-term basis. This was, this was a request for permanent encroachment. What we're, what we're recommending as staff is that there be an annual review, at least for the first couple of years.
Councilmember Hanson.
It would seem that we would be addressing the encroachment permit first because without the encroachment permit, they would not have the extension of premise permit in that area.
Perhaps the permanent nature of it. They do already have extension, they have had extension of liquor license, I believe they're already.
They do not.
They have not, okay.
No, because the fence is needed for the liquor license.
Yeah, but they've been putting it out, but I guess they haven't had it, and I just assume they had with the, with the fence going out. But doesn't matter, Andrew, which order we take that in? Should we do that?
No, Ms. Mayor, that's why I asked the question earlier too, I think that it needs to go in the order of the, the encroachment permit first and the extension of premises because if for some reason the council says, "no, the encroachment," you don't want to approve the extension.
Yeah, certainly, the permanent nature of it, as we've approved in the past, it's more of a temporary and that sort of thing, so.
But to have the extension of premise, that's saying that they're, that's extending the, the limit of their liquor license.
Correct.
And to do that would require the fence around it.
Right.
So.
Right. So, we can do the encroachment permit first, do we need to withdraw motions?
Withdraw my motion.
All right. So, let's go on to item number four, we've heard the report, and let me find the language here we're looking for on the staff report, unless you've got it there, go ahead and make the motion based on that.
Move to approve the permanent encroachment permit for the Sofrita Restaurant located at 16848 Avenue of the Fountains as presented, subject to the adjacent, oh, I'm sorry, the applicant addressing the requirements and conditions outlined in the Building Safety Division, Engineering Division review reports to the town satisfaction, as well as satisfying the Department of Justice ADA access requirements.
And Andrew Shuey stayed in here also that we're, it's an annual review?
Yes, that should be part of the motion.
Is that good?
Is that subject to the?
That could be part of the.
In terms of conditions, isn't that what it means or not?
Are there stipulations in here apart from your presentation, Bob, on the actual encroachment permit? It says permanent as far as expiration date as Councilmember Elke pointed out.
Right, the only change from what was in the staff report to this presentation was the annual review addition.
All right, so we should include that in the motion.
Subject to annual review.
Okay. Good, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public on this item?
Yes, Mayor, two speakers.
All right.
Gene Schletka, followed by Frank Ferrara.
Good, thanks. Hi, Gene.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. My name is Gene Schletka, I live at 15220 North Blackbird. I'd like the council to deny this request by the applicant to encroach on the public right-of-way. Several issues concern me, it seems some have been identified in the package that you have. First, I believe the large width of sidewalk proposed for use by the applicant leaves a maximum sidewalk width for residents and visitors of four feet. We know that a vehicle parked in front of a business will protrude over the curb about one and a half to two feet. Second, the street lamp sits about one and a half to two feet inside the curb, which would place it in the middle of the walkway. Third, why must walkers have to deal with this constraint in our downtown area? The sidewalk is 10 feet wide. Even sidewalks in residential areas are typically six to eight feet wide. As you all know, behind Plaza Fountain Side, the businesses there have expanded their outdoor seating and dining, and after their expansions, the sidewalk is still eight to nine feet wide, a very comfortable walking area when multiple pedestrians are in the area. Fourth, what happens if many businesses on the avenue follow suit with expanding across two-thirds of the sidewalk as the applicant is requesting? Do we end up having people walking in the street to get around the pedestrian traffic? Do we have people walking in the street to get around a dog that's been leashed to the fence outside the restaurant? Fifth, what happens when the business change hands and the new owner has no need for the fence? What happens if the right-of-way is damaged or abused or restrictions not adhered to? The town is strapped on resources, such as code enforcement, to address these potential future issues. Why are we considering allowing this with risks and constraints we can enforce, all of the A-frame signs? Sixth, what happens if there's a severe injury or death in this area? Who's to say that the narrow walkway approved by this body was or was not responsible? Now, is there another solution? I, I think there is. This business, unlike many others, has an enviable location adjacent to the Platte 208 courtyard, and has about a 25-foot frontage on the west side. The courtyard, courtyard's about 60 feet wide, so there's plenty of room to expand out to the west of the restaurant. Why hasn't this been explored? And if it has, what was the result of those discussions? It seems that location west of the restaurant is a win-win-win. Sofrita wins because they get expanded seating in a safer environment. The other businesses in the courtyard win because they have more visibility from the customers frequenting the restaurant. The town wins because our sidewalk remains open and its beautiful design that we paid significant money for will not be covered or damaged by wrought iron fencing, tables and bodies. So, again, I ask that the council deny this request and recommend that all vested parties look at providing Sofrita a better solution for their business. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Frank Ferrara.
Hi, Frank, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Schlum and Cantino, in that order. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me. My name is Frank Ferrara, and I have a scratchy voice, so I probably won't talk too long. But in any event, I am the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce and of course, as representative of Chamber of Commerce, and Carolyn Redendo of Sofrita, of course, she's a member. And if you remember, Redendo's took the opportunity to do two investments in this town rather than just the one. So, they believe in the town and we believe in them. And I do believe that we in the Chamber of Commerce would like to see council unanimously approve this particular issue. We follow the staff's recommendation for approval. And reading over the packet, it's, it's very complete from the standpoint of what staff has done as far as the work involved, as far as all of the ordinances, the restrictions, i.e. the annual reviews. As far as the fencing, somebody just made a statement about the permanency of the fence, not really so, I think six or seven bolts and the fence is gone. It's a relatively permanent fence that can be moved very quickly. Now, let's talk about why. Don't you think, when I looked at this picture in the, in the packet before I even saw that, I thought, wow, that's really neat. That really dresses up the avenue. And isn't it in our vision to make sure that we have a centerpiece in our downtown area? And isn't the Avenue of the Fountains such a centerpiece that we could actually really look at and say, maybe others will follow? We would hope they would, because the ambiance of outside dining is really magnetic. I give you examples. Walk down the street of New Orleans, New York and even Phoenix, and you see a little restaurant, one table and two chairs, and people are sitting there, you're walking by, no fence or anything, first saying, "good morning, good afternoon," whatever it might be. It's a very happy atmosphere. As far as injuries, obviously, when we look at injuries, we could be injured anywhere. Doesn't make any difference whether you're on a sidewalk, a curb, a street, a community center, a golf course, anyplace. So, injuries, as long as folks are careful, I think that's not an issue. Sidewalks seem to be wide enough, in fact, probably wider than some. And also, the actual area, again, I refer to these pictures, really dresses up the avenue. Not only that, but I think we could probably use a little extra income. I wa, I drove by there tonight coming in, I know they have a public use permit for Thursday, we have a Thursday, it's packed. Well, then I say, "don't ever let me speak, please approve it."
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. And council, any more questions for Bob or discussion? Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thank you, sort of a combination of questions and, I guess, comments. Have we ever denied anything like this to a different business? Like, have we ever said no? And does this feel like something that you're comfortable saying and advising that we approve without thinking that somebody would say, "well, we tried to do that," you know, whatever? Because I wouldn't remember myself, but I just wondered if there was anything like that that you can recall.
Yeah, well, since I've been here, we haven't actually had a request like this for activity on the public sidewalk. We've had, obviously, sidewalk sales and things like that, which we've approved, but nothing with a permanent structure, fence and tables like that out, out in the public sidewalk.
Well, thank you. And Mayor, Bob, have any of the neighbors weighed, the businesses weighed in on this one way or the other?
I have not gotten any questions from any of the neighboring properties.
Okay, the, and just to confirm some things, you said ADA, it's ADA compliant even with the, the width of the sidewalk being less?
It is not right now. It will be if we give them the permit and we make them.
Oh, well, that requires.
We'll make sure that it is.
Mayor, will that require any financial output on our part to make it compliant?
No.
Okay, just a couple of things, bear with me. Encroachment, Mayor, encroachment doesn't mean possession or ownership, it's just, it's still the sidewalks that Gene was talking about, they're still town sidewalks?
Correct, they're just giving, being given permission to encroach within the public right-of-way.
Okay, and then just two more things, Mayor. What Frank said about how if other places did it and the livelihood and, and how that would add to the downtown, are we, would we be prepared for something like that to happen? Would that be something that, you know, if that does start to happen, then will we be regretting this or will we say, "okay, we welcome it," or somewhere in between?
That actually is part of what was adopted as part of the downtown master plan, a more vibrant and active downtown area with outdoor dining and seating. So, we would be prepared to deal with it in a similar manner as this, we'll just have to make sure that they comply with the ordinances as they are and probably possibly give them annual reviews as well.
And Mayor, that's about, that was the last thing, the annual review, since we're getting a little, we had two things going here, is that what's going to be reviewed then? Will this be reviewed?
This will come back to you in a year if it's, if it's approved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Bob, looking at Randy's memo, I'm not sure, there seems to be some contradictions with the recommendation. It states that there needs to be maintained three feet clear between the pole and the curb. And I'm just wondering, what's the distance between the lamp pole and the fence? It seems to be less than three feet.
Yeah, there's going to have to be at least a three-foot, if you look at it closely, you can see the fence kind of jogs, it's hard to see in that picture, but you can see there's a little jog in the fence right around the pole. When it is permanently affixed, it'll have to allow for ADA access around it. Now, the three feet is, is the ADA requirement.
So, it would go straight and then bend in and bend out?
Potentially, yes. It can't be left loose because waiters or other people will brush up against it and push it and move it around.
I, I have to say I agree with a number of the things that Gene did bring up, walking down there and, and visualizing, you know, where the fence would be. The car that is parked there is not anywhere near the curb, and generally, when people park, they kiss the curb with their, their tires, which will, they, it will be overhanging on the sidewalk. I'm just wondering if there were some other alternatives looked at? There's the area to the, the east of their door that I believe is still, it's like in front, if you look on the, the diagram that shows their floor plan, that one, where it says the prep area on the inside of the structure, there is, there's additional, I know that zero lot line, and does their current outside seating go to their zero lot line? Is that part of their property?
Their lot line is about a foot and a half to two feet out in front of the, the front wall.
So, is the current patio also on the public sidewalk?
Yes, part of it is.
Okay, all right. I totally agree with Frank about this is absolutely what we want to see downtown, absolutely. But I think we want to look at it in a way, what is the best way to achieve what we're trying to achieve? And that the common areas in 208 are just begging for that type of use to take place. And I think, like Gene mentioned, it would, it would benefit everybody and, you know, really make better use of the property. I'm just, I'm really concerned when, you know, walking down there, if, when you get to the, the street light, if you're walking two people, you almost have to go single file. It's just, I, I'm just really wishing and hoping that we could come up with a better alternative than this.
There are a couple of other things that are interesting about this property in that when it was a previous restaurant, Boulevard Cafe, they came to the council and were granted permission to create a valet station out front, which would effectively eliminate those parking spaces directly out front. They were allowed to create a valet station if they wanted to, they never did. That permit is actually still active because it goes with the property, not with the owners. So, that is potentially, they could eliminate these spaces and I guess alleviate some of what you're talking about. We also considered that maybe some tire bumps, rather than letting them bump into the curb to keep the cars back a little bit, maybe something that could work in that area as well. And to your other point regarding the courtyard area, I know that the applicant was talking to the Platte 208 Association, and I don't know where that has gone. My last conversation with them about that was a few weeks ago, and they hadn't gotten anywhere at that time.
Thank you.
And another question over there, who was first over here? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I too have the same feelings about Mr. Schletka's comments, I think there's some very valuable concerns. I also see some real positive aspects for having the outside seating area as, as the chamber has seen it. I would like to see, opposed to the first review in 12 months, I would like to say, "let's review it in six months for the first 12 months," and then, and then go to a 12-month review period. So, if, if it is in fact a problem, if there is a problem that, that truly needs to be addressed, we won't have to wait a year to address it. So, that's the way I, I would like to address it. I, I like to see, I like the idea, I too agree that the, the sidewalks could be too narrow, but I would like to at least give it a try to see if we can make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cantino.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I, I'm on this avenue every day, and the problem I have, first of all, let me say I encourage business. We need more business in this town, and we need to be business friendly, and I'm glad this is brought up. But my problem is I have with all the dogs walking or on that, that street with the owners, as well as baby carriages. Now, I don't know, is there exactly three feet between the fence? I know you're talking about that, but when I'm there and there's people trying to walk around, I, I can't do that, and I can't go on the other side because I'll be in the, in the street. And I, I wondered if there is that three feet there, which, and if there is, why couldn't they move the fence in a little bit and make that straight instead of angling me in and then put, put me back out in the traffic again of pedestrians?
Well, the, the second part of your question is probably best asked of them, how they would like to configure the outside. Right now, the fence is not, as I said before, not in compliance with ADA, it's movable, it's going in and out, so at any given time, it probably does, does block the ADA access and needs to be pushed back.
The sidewalk on the side, I use that path to go from the 208 parking lot to the avenue. Now, the way you have it there, I don't think I can get my, my scooter beside that. I don't know if that's ADA compliant or not, and there, there way out in there because there's a lot, a lot of sidewalk. No, you had it back, go back.
Were you talking about this sidewalk?
Nope, we're talking about the side of the building.
That's it, that's it.
There. That was it?
Right, and the outdoor seating at the bottom.
Talking about this side.
No, no, is that the one?
It is.
That's the courtyard side?
Yeah, that's it.
That would be in this picture?
In the 208.
Right, that's this picture here. This is the courtyard.
Yeah.
This is the sidewalk. I don't know what the, I don't know what the exact measurements are, but they would be ADA accessible once the fence is.
And what happens when we have our fares and all that traffics, pedestrian traffic's on that sidewalk?
There are, there are potential, as the engineer noted, there are potential conflicts with, with events.
Okay, and then the bumpers that you want to put out there, my problem is sometimes I'm forced to go out in the street because of the traffic and things on the sidewalk. And when you start pushing those cars out, as you well know, when you have that, the curbing come way out, people park their car there. curbing come way out, people park their car there, they're sticking two or three feet out into Avenue of the Fountains. And I think if we get that going, then we're gonna be doing the same thing all the way along with the bumpers that you wanna put in, those concrete bumpers.
That was one option that could be explored. Um, we'd have to look at that.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Marokey.
Bob, can you tell me, um, if I was walking along the Avenue of the Fountains, maybe from the, from the, uh, end of, or from the direction of the park, uh, along the fence line in front of Sofrita, do you know what the distance is where the fencing would be? From start to finish until it got to the courtyard area?
I don't know.
Any idea? Can you estimate for me how long it would take you to walk from one end to the fence to the other?
From one end of the, from?
From where the fence would start, the eastern most part of the fence?
This end, to this end here?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thirty, forty seconds at the most.
Okay. So we'd have about thirty, forty seconds of encumbered area or more, more so than the other parts of the avenue. Um, if I may, Mayor, um, what, now, the fence has been up there at different times prior to today, correct?
That's correct.
Have you had a chance to observe traffic flows while the fence has been up?
I have not personally observed them, no. I've, I've gotten reports that it seems to be working okay.
Have there been any complaints about the fence when it has been up?
I have not gotten any complaints.
Are there any other staff members that could speak to the traffic flows and any potential problems or lack thereof along the fence when it has been up?
I know that some staff members have been there during, uh, Thursday night events. Uh, I don't believe they're in the audience tonight, but, uh, they have mentioned that they've been there during the events.
Okay. Now, have you been able to ascertain the way that the fence is going to be put into the sidewalk if this is granted?
It hasn't been designed yet because of the ADA issues. We, it has to be ADA accessible both inside and outside, so we haven't actually designed it. Uh, it'd be a waste of staff time to do that unless they were given permission.
Do, do you have an opinion as to how easy it would be to remove it if it became necessary?
I think Mr. Farrar's example was, was correct. There'll be a few bolts holding it down, and they'd just be taken out relatively easily.
Um, would it be possible, Mayor, to have Carolyn Redendo come up? We just have a few questions.
You bet. I was gonna ask her as well. I've got a couple of questions. Ms. Redendo, welcome. How are you?
Okay, I'm so good.
Good.
Thank you for viewing this.
Yeah, you betcha. Councilmember Marokey.
Thank you. Hi, Carolyn.
Oh, hi. Hello.
Just a few questions for you. Some, some of the questions, uh, Mr. Slecta raised, uh, with one in particular, um, if someone did tie their dog up to the fence, which we've seen at some of the other businesses by the park, it does cut down on the width of the property there. So there's some concern about the traffic there. And then the second thing I'd like you to speak to is, when you do have outdoor activities such as the flamenco dancers or other entertainment, can you speak to what you would anticipate being there or hope that would be there, and include the other circled area, um, the other, um, area underneath the canopy that you're looking for? I don't know if you, Bob, if you can go back to that.
Oh, sorry.
That circled area where the canopy is, and if you've thought about any measures that you're gonna take to prevent traffic blockages or pedestrians from stopping on the sidewalk and observing whatever entertainment that you have?
Okay, to the first one, um, with dogs, we're restricted as a restaurant for pets. I mean, they, they would have to either be a guidance dog for inside, and then for outside, we usually haven't had much people staying there with a pet. You know, we do leave the little bowls. We notice pets coming at night, but, um, we wouldn't allow probably it to be tied to the gate. I think under our own health codes as far as under the Maricopa Health Department, we wouldn't be able to do that. And then what was the second question? I'm sorry?
The other question was if, um, if you have some entertainment over at the canopied area that circled there, the little yellow spot?
Yes.
And presumably, the entertainment would be not only for people walking along the sidewalk, but for those that are having drinks and eating inside the proposed fenced area. What measures would you plan on taking to make sure that the sidewalk isn't blocked for regular pedestrians who aren't there for the entertainment?
Okay. We've, we've put in, well, the current entertainment we have, they have wooden floors, so they kinda mainly maintain themselves on the wood, on the wooden floors for the dancing. And usually, there's a walkway. We have noticed that pedestrians will sit, like underneath the pavilion near the circle. We have pedestrians or locals that sit there to watch entertainment. And we do encourage that people can come and view the entertainment rather than have to patronize the restaurant. We kinda hope in the future that we would have people there trying to view it. Um, currently, we do notice that most of the time on both sides of the avenue that will, the parking lot will be filled. Sometimes the cars kinda go slow, but in our, what we've seen from the past Thursday evenings is that they'll slow down a little bit, but they don't usually stop, kind of like at the farmer's market. You know, they kinda slow down a little bit, they see something curious, but we haven't seen anyone actually stop or any type of, um, traffic prompt. But on the most part, they will park, and then we do have people that kinda crowd around the area, but they kinda take the seating or they go towards the courtyard, 'cause there's seating in the courtyard as well.
Okay. So you, you stated earlier, I just wanna be real clear, you would have a policy in place that you would not allow pets to be tied to your fence?
Well, pets can be out on the exterior of the restaurant, but we're not really allowed to have them, you know, tied, you know, tied down or anything like that.
So as to not block the sidewalk?
Right, right, right.
If this is granted, of course.
Right.
And would you also have, um, employees or staff in place to prevent there from being any blockages along the sidewalk?
We try to have, like, the, the staff that's outside serving those tables. We try to view that, that everything outside, you know, is falling well. And again, each performance is different. We have noticed that we do get, we do get some, you know, people that do, um, sit around courtyard or stand around there, but since there's, you know, luckily in that area, underneath the pavilion, there's like four or five benches, the metal benches, and people seem to sit there, but they don't necessarily stand because it is a long performance, a two-hour performance, so we haven't had people standing or blocking the area.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, thanks. Good points. Carolyn, if you would, can you comment on the, your discussions with Platte 208? Because they're obviously, that, that's an obvious solution that seems to be one that wouldn't infringe on the sidewalk and, and is also a, kind of a fairly pretty area. What's happening there? Are there options for you in the future there?
Okay, if you can go back to the other, um, oh, can we go back to the other slide? Okay, I could just, um-
Which one?
The one with the, the restaurant layout. Oh, yeah. With the Platte 208, um, we, we have, we haven't heard back from them. We have been working with trying to use just the two tables on the side in that diagram. You really can't put that many tables there. It goes kind of, um, closer up to our door. And then also, there's a sidewalk there that has to be, you know, accessible to, to the public to walk. Um, we have approached them with some other things that we're trying to do, which is more in the back area. We're trying to, um, revitalize the alleyway and kind of make a, and that's a whole area there. And they have, you know, approved that one. Um, on here, I, I probably have to go to one of the board meetings. We've, we've contacted through email, but honestly, I haven't heard back from them. We also don't want to, um, 'cause right behind us, we have a gift shop, so we don't wanna block their, um, visualization, 'cause usually the A-frame signs go in that corner. So we wanna make sure it's visible for the gift shop and for the other businesses that are behind us. So pretty much, we would be able to put two tables, but it kinda goes right close to our door, and then we need access, 'cause that's the door, um, for wheelchair access that we have. So we would need access, um, from that side. But I think with Platte 208, we, we are trying to work with them just to try to get that corner, corner area. And then we wouldn't be able to use their tables or anything, 'cause then, um, you know, according for the liquor department, we would have to enclose that whole courtyard. And then there's, um, you know, in the area, there's, you know, ca, there's, um, like cactuses and things like that. It would have to be all enclosed. So we'd have to kinda go around it. And, um, there's different, it's a kind of like a trail in there.
Good. That's, that's what I was trying to envision. I remember it's kind of a desert.
Right.
It's kind of a desert. It may not be as easy to place four, five, six tables in there. And then you mentioned you'd have to fence that entire area and it'd be kind of a separate area for, if you wanted to have alcohol out there as well.
Yeah, I mean, you could do it where, you know, I mean, we have sometimes people who, you know, for lunch, they might, you know, do takeout and sit there. But you, for alcohol, you'd have to make sure, even if you don't know the table's gonna, um, order alcohol, that it would be fenced off during that period of time.
Carolyn, the, um, how is the, how is it working, in your opinion, right now? 'Cause you've obviously had the fence up, you've been playing with, and you got this new fence that can be moved, but isn't the easiest thing to move and?
It's, you know, to be honest, it is difficult, but we wanna be in compliance. Like, we don't wanna do anything not in compliance. It is difficult. We do set it up and then we break it down for the, for the, after the event. Um, you know, us too, it's a learning process, we, learning process. We wanna be, um, in, you know, within the laws and to, and stuff. But we also, you know, we visualize kind of, you know, growing with the town and also having that whole avenue kind of, you know, build up as far as, you know, people. And we want other businesses there. It would affect us, um, as well as them. Um, the process right now, the fences are portable. You know, we move them and we can adjust the sizes, so, you know, we do measure them to make sure that they're within the restriction size. But, but it is a little difficult for us, but, um, you know, until we get approval, we wanna make sure that we're not over approaching our own boundaries and the town's boundaries. But, um, we visualize kind of like, I guess in Phoenix, they have areas where there is outdoor walking, and, and it kind of encourages other businesses to participate and do the same. And it, it does liven up the area, you know, from, from, from what we've seen, we haven't had, I don't know if anyone would actually complain to us personally, but we haven't had any, any complaints or anything about, um, the process or how we've been doing it.
Good. Councilmember Legay.
Oh, hi.
Carolyn, thank you for your comments.
Oh, yeah.
And our citizen comments from, um, Mr. Slecta. Um, you know, you just, you just mentioned a word that I think is, is critical to this whole discussion. Use the word "learning process." Now, for the longest time, we have had our residents through planning-
Yes.
-and many discussions, town halls, et cetera, et cetera, top priority is to create a vibrant downtown.
Right, right.
And I share some of the same concerns that were raised this evening. But at the same time, I think at some point in time, we need to take some risks. We, we need to experiment with something that's a little different and a little, something that's new. So I view it as a learning process. And, um, I'm very comfortable looking at it, almost, Bob, as, as a pilot. And, um, I think the six months would make sense there for the first year, see how it works out, and, um, work with the business owner and, and make adjustments as possible. There's a lot of flexibility there. So I think it's good for Fountain Hills. I think it's good for downtown. And with respect to pedestrian access or ADA access, we, we certainly can work through those, those, those issues. Um, I think the idea of six months was, was, was a good, was a good suggestion. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thank you. If it's not for you, you're off.
I understand.
Um, the, the idea of the six months, though, um, was there a reason, we talked, somebody meant, I think maybe you, Cassie, mentioned the fair. Would there be a reason to want to see how it worked through the fair? Um, I just, 'cause six months wouldn't quite get us there.
Any thoughts? Councilmember Marokey.
Well, I think the, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but the right-of-way, the encroachment, uh, permit calls that it, uh, one of the terms is that it's gonna expire in six months. Is that, is that correct, Bob?
Well, the application was for a permanent encroachment, and, uh, we were, we were as staff recommending that you allow that with reviews annually. Now it's six months, apparently.
Now, now, when we say permanent, Mayor, thank you, when we say permanent, it's something that-
As long as it's-
The council, if council decides to revoke it two months after it's been issued, is that something that can be done, or perhaps that's something for Mr. McGuire to answer?
Well, I would assume that the annual review or the six-month review, obviously, you could do that then. Uh, prior to that, let Andrew answer that one.
Andrews, are, if there's something that's, we're not pleased with, is that something that we can do prior to a review?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that in granting the, the encroachment permit, whatever conditions you put on at the time of grant is what's gonna be governing going forward. It's a bit of a square peg in a round hole to use an encroachment permit in this instance, because that's typically used when we have construction projects of limited duration, where people are gonna come on a site, into encroaching the town property, and then be done and leave. Um, this begs for a little bit more permanent document, which leads me to the same recommendation the staff is, to make it an annual renewal so that when you see whether or not you like the process, if you do, we can convert this into something that's a little more appropriate for the specific use rather than our encroachment permit process. But right now, encroachment permits are six months and done. So if you want it to continue on to that one-year period, that needs to be part of the approval tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marokey.
I understood the, the motion was for one year, though.
It is currently, right now, yep. We'd have to amend that.
But I would move then to amend the motion to reflect a six-month period. I think that'll give us time to see if it works or not. And if it works, great. If it doesn't, well, it was worth a shot. And it also gives time, it gives staff time to work out the kinks with parking, if parking blocks need to be installed, if, uh, if there's some issue as far as accessibility, bless you, uh, issues with respect to accessibility for pedestrians that are walking up and down. We really wanna encourage, obviously, the downtown growth, and, and I agree with some of the comments that this is a bit of a pilot program, an experiment, and we should invite this within restrictions, of course, and have the ability to rein it in if there is a problem.
Great. Uh, down here, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have a, this is a, we have a amendment to the motion. Do you, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second, okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I feel the six months would also give us one fair, I believe. Isn't that correct?
No.
No?
Take us right up to the fair in October.
Well, as long as it's reviewed, that's correct. We wouldn't get it on the first six months, so we'd be able to review the pro, the pro, progress in the first six months. And then I would like to think if it really causes havoc during the fair, that they would take it down without, you know, being asked. I, I would think that would be common sense. If it truly, truly causes havoc, uh, which might resolve that issue. But, and then at the twelve, first 12-month review, we could take a look at the fair.
Good. Now, any more discussion? We got a motion, a second amendment. Any more discussion on the amendment? All in favor of, of the, do we need to vote on the amendment? Yes, thank you. Getting these eyes like I was doing it wrong. Happens at home, too. Um, all in favor of the amendment, which would make it, uh, six months, uh, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, great, thanks. So can you continue the discussion on the, on the item? Um, the, this, you know, obviously, this is something that we're overlaying an existing area, and we'd like, I'd like to have a little more sidewalk remaining be outside of the fencing, but obviously, we're constrained to what we have before us there today. Um, perhaps, not bollards, but those curb stops could be put in. Perhaps work with the property owner on that. Is that, um, part, part of the condition, Bob, uh, on those parking spaces, four or five of them in the front?
It was one of the options that we discussed with the town engineer. There are a number of options that we were gonna look at when we were, when we were designing it to make sure that it was ADA compliant, and, and the, the vehicle bumper overhang was part of that.
I think that's a great idea. Um, not a, I don't think that's a significant investment. If this were a huge investment for the property owner, and we all wanna have this type of thing happen, I think we'd be looking at a longer term and, and, um, trying to come up with a more permanent solution. But largely, uh, the investment's already been made, and now it's just the permanency of, as far as bolting them down is, is what's going to be, uh, added here. So I don't think it's a, a big burden to the property, uh, to the business to, uh, ask for, for that, perhaps, to be part of the mix as well. Um, I think that would help to ensure that there's, um, enough sidewalk space for people walking. I think Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Cantino, uh, being a person that's on Electric Cart there, has great feedback. And if you would, Bob, on the picture with you on it, can you find that one? And then can you, uh, you gotta figure out a way to zoom in on there, Bob. Zoom in on there. Figure out a way to zoom in on there. Can you do it?
Nope.
Okay. Oh, if you zoom in on there, if, if our packet, it's a PDF, it's easy to zoom in. You can see that the fence does jog around pretty clearly. And if you've been out there, you can see it. There, it, it's, as long as it's in the right spot, Council, Vice Mayor Cantino, there's certainly room to get a cart or wheelchair, uh, around there, certainly. Uh, but you're right, it's, it is still narrower than what we have today. Um, but this is, uh, also, if I, uh, could, I'm pretty sure these tables and chairs, um, Ms. Redendo, will those remain out there when you're not open? The tables and chairs? So this being an encroachment permit for act for business use, uh, with those, I would assume those tables and chairs being on the public sidewalk would still be available for people to sit down on if you're not open as well. So that brings some additional benefit to folks that wanna sit along the avenue, perhaps outside of business hours, um, and, and relax where there are some benches, but not a great deal of seating outdoors. Um, this is something we definitely wanna see more of in downtown. It's not going to be, uh, perfect, and that's where we'll find our way, and that's why I think we've made this amendment for a six-month review, um, on this, to make sure we're, we're not taking a step in, in harming, uh, ourselves. But I doubt that's gonna be the case, and make some, some additional, um- make some, some additional, um, adjustments at that six-month period, perhaps. And the fencing, again, is needed primarily for the alcohol. Is that correct? Or is it needed for, to have a restaurant outdoors? Bob?
It's actually required by our local ordinance. If you have an outdoor seating and dining area, you're supposed to be fenced or separated somehow from vehicular traffic.
Okay, so, okay, thanks. And then parking, obviously, if you look at the aerial, there's just a little bit of parking behind the buildings. I assume parking is not an issue. The last time we reviewed, something similar to this was with Plaza Fountain Side when they wanted to expand their seating, and parking there was somewhat of a constraint.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of parking in Plot 208. There's, there's no issues with parking at all.
Okay. And the, uh, Sofrita comfortable with, uh, six months? Yeah, good. And, um, any more comments on council? Let me first go down to Vice Mayor.
Uh, yes. Mr. Rogers, I'm still really concerned about those bumpers because, like today, there was a car sideswiped and hit another one with a lady taxiing going down the street. Now, you know how tight that is in there where cars are in there. I've actually seen three cars come down that avenue. And I guess that I'm really concerned for the safety of everybody, and those bumpers are gonna push those cars back out into the avenue. And it's gonna be a big concern to somebody.
If it turns out, and we, we'll look at it all, but if it turns out that it creates more of a hazard than it helps, then obviously, we wouldn't do that. We'll have to think of something else.
I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Councilmember Marrowkey.
I, I think it's important to, to recognize and point out, uh, the evenings out here aren't exactly jumping with nightlife, and during the summer months, um, it's, it's kind of rare to see somebody walking along the avenue during the summer. So I, I, I don't think that we're gonna see too many problems as far as traffic are concerned. We should be, be so lucky if we do have traffic congestion and issues in the downtown area. So I want to thank Carolyn Redendo for running a successful, uh, restaurant down there and having the need to expand, uh, as you are. And I appreciate you bringing this forward and, uh, wish you much success.
Yeah, this, this reminiscence of some of the photo, photographs we saw in our downtown vision planning of, you know, creating a nice atmosphere down there. Of course, we are overlaying it on something that's already been created, and we have ADA things to work around, so, you know, it's, it's a little bit of this, the square peg in the round hole. But I think this is a, a good chance to try it. Um, this business is, has been bringing a lot of vibrancy downtown, um, and we're thankful for that, and we certainly are supportive of the business. And I think someone mentioned, mentioned a, a measured risk, and that's something I think that's worthy of doing at this time. And seem to put in some constraints and some conditions regarding certainly ADA compliance to make sure people can get, uh, up and down the sidewalk safely. And a six-month review seems to be reasonable for us to make sure that we're still comfortable with it come six months, but I think it's gonna be very successful, and I'm excited to see it happen on, on more of a permanent basis rather than having to have the Redendos haul their fence in and out whenever they, uh, whenever they want to use it. Uh, Councilmember Marrowkey.
Thank you. Mayor, may we direct staff to be prepared in six months to present maybe perhaps an assessment of how this has worked or not worked, and any potential problems or issues? Perhaps gather some information, uh, to be presented in the six-month period so that we would have a good idea as to how this is going?
Yep, great. A little bit in advance so we don't run out of permit. Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. So we have, uh, Councilmember Hanson.
Um, I, this would probably be for Andrew. When it comes to getting a, an extension of premise, a permanent extension of premise, does it have to be adjacent to the original structure? I mean, if, and I'm just, this is going back to the, the common property.
Yeah.
If a portion of that, not the entire thing, just a portion of it, um, that would be adjacent, not adjacent to, but right across the sidewalk from the restaurant, I mean, is it, can you have an extension of premise that you cross a public sidewalk to get to your enclosed area?
Andrew, that could be potentially like a limited common element within the Plot 208 homeowner or property owner association, so perhaps it's kind of part of theirs already to some extent. But, Andrew?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, I, I believe we have had some in the past that have been separated by a little bit, but we can go back and certainly take a look at it, if, if that area just across the landscaping strip in the, the center of the common area, is that what you're talking about? We'll take a look because I, my recollections, we've had some that have had a little gap and preserved a sidewalk in between, and then you went over to another beer garden.
Well, through a gate.
Right.
I mean, I just, I, I just think there's such an opportunity in using those common areas, and it would seem that maybe that would be something Lori, even maybe with the downtown merchants, you know, working with 208, to say, how can we better use this, this, you know, these nice little areas in the downtown? And granted, it is kind of desert-y, and it's a little hilly and undulating, but, you know, with some, a little remodeling, and it could be kind of flattened out a little bit so that it, it could have better use. Because I, I think that would really be a, a great alternative and a goal to, to strive for.
Great. I think so as well. All right, we are back onto the main motion here for a, uh, decision if there's no more dialogue or questions. Uh, thank you again, Sofrita, and thank you Lori and staff for working with Sofrita to help them, uh, help us realize more of our vision plan. Uh, with that said, look for a motion, uh, a vote on, uh, the main motion. All in favor of granting this? Indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Someone make the other motion.
Come again?
Someone make the other motion.
Oh, that's right, we have our, our fourth item, which is, was the third item. Thank you very much. Uh, yes, uh, we will now he, uh, make a, uh, consider the permanent liquor license